Hey Julie.
Hey Chris, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm pretty good.
Is there public participation tonight gang? Anyone? Public participation? I didn't see it on the agenda.
Hey there, nope, it's not on the agenda. Russ is not going yet. No, it would have to be voted on and it's a very long agenda, but we can see.
Okay, yeah, I'll stick it out, see if you guys want to add it, that'd be great, I just got a couple of words, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not muted, no, we're, we're talking away here, everybody could hear you. Say hi, say hi everybody. The meeting didn't start yet.
No. No.
Alright, everybody. Good evening. It's hard coming back to work after a week off. But, the rough day. Anyway, welcome to the Roxbury regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission for May, it's May twenty eighth twenty twenty four. I'll call the meeting in order and seat the members, who's here? Rob, you want to start, are you here? I don't see Rob.
Alright.
He's not here yet. Alright, John, you want to start?
Sure, John Smollega.
Sue Fedge.
Kathy Roz.
Chris Hagerty.
Anybody else?
That's it for now.
Let me see where Sierra's at.
Oh, I'm, Rob's in the waiting room now, I'm letting him in.
Okay, is he in?
He is in and he has a microphone and camera, Rob, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Hi, Rob, just state your name so we can join.
Rob Horgan.
Okay, so we do have a full quorum. But Sierra's missing, so Kathy, should I seat Chris, are you gonna have to leave?
Um, it depends on how late we go, I have till about eight forty-five.
Ah, you should be fine, so I'll seat you for Sierra. So we have a full quorum. Under approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Anybody have any comments on the minutes?
Looks fine to me.
Alright, I'll look for a motion for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April twenty-third.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes carry, now approval of special minutes from the April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Do I have a motion for that? That meeting was to discuss a notice of violation, if you remember.
Yep.
Alright, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the, the special meeting minutes from April thirtieth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Special meeting minutes carry. Old business, Kyle Conway, fifty-four Rocky Mountain Road driveway.
Excuse me, Russ.
Come back.
Yep, here's the driveway map, excuse me, Russ, Sierra's now on.
Pardon?
Sierra is now on.
Okay. I will now Sierra for Kathy.
Hello.
Hello. Alright, why did we ask Kyle to come back, somebody refresh my fading memory.
Um, you guys were gonna go out and do a site walk of the proposed driveway.
Oops. I might have missed it, because I had two kids graduating, it was a wild month, so.
It was a busy weekend, my goodness.
I guess what's done is done and we could just table this the next meeting.
Could, could you just zoom in a little bit, just on the map, I, I think that this is new, new? Is that correct, Julie?
No. No, last, last meeting they came in because we issued a notice of violation.
That's right, that's right, I'm sorry, I guess I thought that they, they were sending a, a new one that included the whole.
No, he said he's done with all his work. Um, but we, we wanted to go look at it before we, we pulled the NOV. So that's my fault and we will, we will get that done next month. And again, when there's sidewalks, anybody could go, just let me know you're going. Remember, you could only go with two people, three's a meeting, three's a crowd, so can't do three, but you could go with somebody else, just let me know. Uh, these aren't just set up for me to go, it's really anybody.
And, and Russ, in years past, we always had volunteers, you know, at the meetings would say, okay, I'll do this walk.
Yeah, we could go back to that, I think COVID kind of made it hard, um, and we're done with COVID, obviously. Somebody should tell Deep that, because Deep still works from home, but most of us are done with COVID anyway.
So, so on that point, i- i- if we are doing a sidewalk, um, what, do, do we need to let Kyle know, or how does this?
Yeah, you always, you always have to let the owner know when you're coming, they don't have to be there, if they want to be there, then you need to work around them. But yes, you, you must make them aware you're coming and they have to agree.
Oh, oh, okay, so we'd work that through Julie?
Yeah, or sometimes we, we get the information from them and then, and then you could contact them directly.
Oh, oh, okay, I, I'm happy to do a walk if anybody wants to, I'll, I'll, um, send an email out. And, and just looking at this map, is the, the red? Just the, the, do we have a key on what the, the red, I just want to be sure we have it marked. That's a fence, okay, and is the wetlands marked?
Yeah.
And, and is it flagged at the, at the site as well?
It's pretty clear to see, made a driveway.
But, I'm sorry, is the wetlands flagged at the site?
There's really no wetlands other than that swale that you see, which is defined as an intermittent stream.
Okay, and so, so that's, that's no, it's just, it's just the swell, okay?
Right.
Hey Russ, just as a reminder, I stepped down from this one.
Right. We're not voting on it, we're just gonna table it the next meeting. Okay? Next.
Can I, can I make a comment, if you guys can hear me, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I, I.
Oh, Kyle, hi Kyle.
Hi, hi, um, yeah, I wasn't, I thought maybe you guys had done a site visit, I didn't hear anything, um. I was just, uh, is there any way I could just kind of continue cleaning up what I've started and I can meet you guys, you know, at any point next week or whatever? Um, to go over everything.
I'll come out, it was my, I raised my hand on that, I'll come out. Um. I'll probably come out either Friday or Saturday.
Uh, Friday, yes, that would work, yep, Friday or Saturday, no problem, yep.
Alright Kyle, I'll get your, uh, phone number off the, uh, application and then we could go from there.
Okay, sounds, sounds good.
Russ, excuse me, but if you're going out, are you going to give him their authorization, so as the commission, do we have to vote on giving you the authorization to give him permission?
Right, he, he filed an after the fact application, right?
Yes, I filled out the application.
Yes, so we need to vote on that application and we have till next meeting to do that, but if he just wants to clean things up, uh, I'll bring John with me because John could approve that, just cleaning it up, and then the commission has to vote on the after the fact application.
But Ju- Julie, were you gonna say something?
Um, he filed an application because he only had a stop work order. He, he doesn't have an NOV issued. So he did file an application right away and submit a map.
Okay, so next meeting, we need to vote on the application.
Yeah. Is the application here?
Yes. And so that was the map and this is and it is complete.
Yeah, that's it. Alright, let's move on gang, we got a long agenda and this, this is something, we've got to put off till next month anyway, so. Next on the agenda, a preliminary review of seventy-one Minor Bridge Road, Arthur Howland and Associates. Remind the commission, just in case you're wondering what the site is. Um, this is on Minor Bridge Road. Uh, Art Howland and Associates submitted an application a few months ago.
Hey, hey Russ, Russ, we, we skipped an item before that one.
We did, oh, sorry.
Eighty-three Squire Road.
Right. Robert and Phil, uh, eighty-three Squire Road, construction of patio with a sitting wall, why don't we bring up a map and see what they want to do?
Okay.
Could you zoom in on the patio?
Sure. Then we also have this. And what it's anticipated to look like. But.
Wow, the magic of AI.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Okay. Um. Somebody here to represent the applicant, or is the applicant here?
Good evening, my name is Vince Sinopoli and I'm, I'm the agent for Phil. And, uh, Bob? Am I coming in okay?
Yep.
Yes, you are.
Great, great, so, uh, they're the ones that are gonna hire me to build the patio with the sitting wall. Um, and I, I that we're proposing.
Okay, there's not much here to look, to talk about really, unless anybody has a question, the best thing to do is go out and look at it. And then we, we, we could go from there.
Great, so what I did was I, I, I put up four wood stakes to emphasize the patio location for your review. And I just placed it in a way where there won't be any tree cutting or, um, any harm to the, any, to the property tree lines.
Okay, do they need us to call them before we go out?
Um, I, I would probably be, be okay, sure, it wouldn't, would help, yeah.
Okay. Alright, yeah, let them know, I didn't, a lot of times people don't live, you know, they're, they're only here on certain weekends, so.
Yep, they're, they're all, they, they live there all, all year round.
Alright, eighty, eighty-three Squire Road.
Right. Yeah, yeah, this is Bob Adamsky speaking.
Hi Bob.
Hi. Yeah, um, I just, uh, unmuted my, um, my microphone, anytime is fine. Uh, no permission required, just come on board and look it over.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let you know anyway, I don't want to pop up on somebody, you know? Okay. I, I'll let you know, Rob, you want to go with me on this and we go, we could go look at, uh, um, Kyle's? Do you have some time Friday or Saturday?
Um, I can't do it this week at all.
Alright, Kathy, you want to go?
Yeah, I'll go.
Alright, I'll, I'll be in touch.
Okay, thanks. Um, I, I, I just, is there, was there more comment on this, I just had a question, or should we wait until next meeting for questions?
Well, well, usually we wait until next meeting, but sometimes we ask questions if we're concerned about something that they could correct before the next meeting.
Um, I don't, I don't know that they could correct it. Um, I, it was just about the site location and the proximity to Jax Brook. Um, so it looks like it's forty, forty feet or so, is that, is that what it said?
That's right, correct.
It's in the buffer zone, commissions cannot regulate buffer zones unless there's a direct impact to the, to the wetlands or water course.
As a reason.
You can't deny things just because they're in a buffer zone. Uh, you, you have to, especially if there's no feasible prudent alternative, obviously if somebody uh, lives on a stream, they, they want to sit out by the stream, uh, we have to look at the, the potential impact.
Right, of the building on the stream.
And you can't really do it looking at this map, so that's why we need to go out, take a look at it and reconvene.
Right, but, but it's clear, there, you know, it's about the impact, right, Russ?
Yeah, it has, you have to have an impact, you can't you can't deny just because it's in, in, in the hundred foot buffer zone. You have to have a reason.
Right, but, but the flip side is you don't have to necessarily accept unless, you know, you, you, you're looking at the impact.
You're looking at the impact, and if there's experts, you have to listen to the experts, you don't have to agree with the experts. But you can't, um, just cut them off, you know, just, ah, you're, you don't know what you're talking about kind of thing, you have to listen to what they're saying. You don't have to agree. One of the things in the handout I sent a couple of months ago says, you know, ask questions of the experts, you know, don't just disagree with them, but ask questions. Okay?
Thank you, yes.
So now on the seventy-one Minor Bridge Road, this is, uh, the proposal for a lake house uh, on the lake. Um, they withdrew the application because we expressed concerns and our experts felt that the application was woefully incomplete. It was missing some calculations that Paul claims are in there, so uh, they withdrew it and I'm sure Paul made sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, so what's a preliminary review? Uh, because this, this is new to the commission for people who haven't been on the commission for five or ten years, we haven't had one of these since they wanted to build the elementary school in a, in a, in a bog. So this is there's, it's an informal discussion, so the applicant wants to show us what they're proposing, shows what they've done and it's an informal discussion, it's not an apple, it's not an application. You're not gonna vote on it, but what you will get is some information about um, about what the proposed project is, if it's changed at all from what they withdrew. And, uh, again, uh, the concern is it's in the two hundred foot buffer zone of the Shipog River, so you, you have to match what the potential impact is to the river and to the lake, because the river turns into a lake right there, right at that point. Um, I, I urge all of you to, uh, go to Yukon Clear and look at the Riparian, uh, buffer talk that they gave a few weeks ago. Because it really stresses the need to preserve uh, the buffers along rivers and wetlands. And as I said before, Vermont has gone to a hundred foot buffer, no questions asked, can't build in it, it's there, don't even try to build in it. But that's Vermont and we're Connecticut, and Connecticut's talking about that, as we know. Um, and we'll see, see where that goes. So this, just an informal discussion so they could present what they're thinking and you could ask questions. So Paul, you're up.
Hey, good evening for the Director Post Minsky Professional Engineer, is it okay if I share my screen, Julie?
Yes, go ahead.
Alright, thanks. There you go. Alright, so you guys can see my screen now?
Yep.
Okay, great, um, so we didn't discuss this a lot as, as part of the prior application, um, but it was something that I believe John Smollega um, had asked for, uh, was looking at the property in its entirety as a starting point. Um, so the northern post, the top of the map where my cursor is pointing is Miners Bridge Road. Um, as you know, the Shipog River is to the right of the property, the town's parking area, uh, is to the right of the green line, which represents my client's property. And the Shipog River then turns into Lake La Anona. Um, so this property is located in both uh, Bridgewater and Roxbury, uh, so it consists of a total of a hundred and fifty-two acres in size. Uh, along that, uh, they own, uh, along the Shipog slash Lake La Anona from the bottom of the screen all the way up. Uh, they own four hun- forty-five hundred feet of frontage along the river and lake. Um, as you can see, uh, the, all of the property in Bridgewater, which is the lower portion of this property, is fully forested. And the overwhelming majority of the property in Roxbury is forested as well. Uh, our development area is shown in this little orange area, which represents the proposed house. Uh, I also created just so you could see all the upland review areas on the property. So when we look, uh, along the the lake itself is the two hundred foot upland review area, which is along that forty-five hundred feet of frontage. And then there's a brook that bisects the property in Roxbury and it continues to the west as well, and uh, that also consists of upland review area, so there's about twenty-one, twenty-one point nine, twenty-two acres of upland review area on the property. Um, at the last meeting, uh, it was brought up that on this property, there was previously, a house that was previously approved, at that time, we didn't have a chance to look at it closely, but my office has looked at it closely, um, since then. Um, so, this is just flipped around, so Miners Bridge Road is located on the bottom of the map. And then just to kind of orient yourself, this is the old house that is along Miners Bridge Road. Currently, we're proposing a driveway, uh, to come off of that, which was kind of the uh, old wood road. As part of the Rondina plans, it's, it's, let me zoom in, um, it's sort of tough because it's an old school blueprint. We used ammonia back in the day. Um, as part of their plan, um, they instead had proposed to come off of Miners Bridge Road, uh, cross over, uh, an intermittent water course in the field and then meander down into the property. Uh, so we were able to look at this relatively closely. Um, this map, uh, was what I think you guys had, uh, shown at the last meeting. So this shows the Shipog slash Lake La Anona on the left side and then their development foot- footprint with their septic system uh, located, uh, towards that water course that bisects the property, uh, but they did maintain a hundred feet in that area. Um, so what we did was we, we looked at what was previously proposed and I'll go over that in a minute and compared it to our now uh, revised plan. So if you recall at the last meeting, um, we discussed this plan here. Um, so this plan had a couple of things that weren't going for it well, uh, we had a fair amount of grading activity within a hundred feet of the Shipog River. Uh, we had stormwater discharges within a hundred feet of the Shipog River. We had the proposed stormwater level spreader, uh, we were not infiltrating water, that was within a hundred feet of the river. There was no, uh, formal hard buffer to delineate between the, the house activity area, so to speak, and the river, um, so what we did was we went back to the drawing board, is it related to all of those activities, I'm actually just gonna rotate this, so it's the same orientation that you were just looking at. And we did a bunch of things. Um, one was, uh, as part of the review performed by the third party. Uh, it was requested that we look at uh, the topography downgrading of the septic, if you recall, the septic system uh, was located about a hundred feet, uh, a hundred and seventy feet or so from the water course itself, um, so what we've done is we located the field topography between there and the water course, you can see that there's a lower plateau. More importantly, we located the entire woodland in that area, uh, so you can see there's dozens and dozens of mature trees in that area that will be maintained as a buffer. Down at the house area, uh, we redesigned the grading of the house itself and we now have a walkout basement. What this allows us to do is to significantly uh, decrease the area of grading in close proximity to the lake. Um, we've also field located all of the trees uh, down gradient from our proposed activity, um, so you can see all of them, there's over a hundred and fifty trees in this particular area. And as part of the, the plan, what we did was we removed all that grading that was previously there. Um, we've incorporated a retaining wall which acts as a physical barrier. All of the, we, we still have our footing drain discharge, but we've moved that back significantly, it's greater than a hundred feet from the river. All activities are now greater than a hundred feet from the river, so we have um, four hundred and fifty thousand square feet of riparian buffer, the entire hundred foot along the entire uh, forty-five hundred feet is now preserved, so it's about ten acres in size that we're not touching. Uh, we moved.
Well, that discharge, is that roof drainage discharge?
Nope, that's just, that's, that's just footing drain, uh, I'm gonna go over the roof discharge in a minute.
Okay, it's the footing drain.
Yep, just the footing drain, so the roof, the, the roof discharge, uh, for the right portion of the building is now in a series of rechargeers at the rear of the house. Um, those are located about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty feet from the river. Um, we've sized those for basically double the hundred year storm event. Similarly, for the left area of the house and the driveway in that area, uh, we've taken that to a series of underground rechargeers as well, which are greater than a hundred feet uh, from the river, and we've also sized those for double the hundred year storm event, so we've, we've greatly decreased our activities such that there's now no activity within a hundred feet of the Shipog River. Um, we then looked at uh, a comparison between the two thousand and six plan and the, uh, two thousand and twenty-four plan that we're now working on, so the plan on the left is our plan, the plan on the right was the Rondina plan, that was previously. Is our plan, the plan on the right was the Rondina plan that was previously approved. I actually have another. Uh, overlay that will help us see things. A little bit better, um, so I have some numbers on this, I'm also gonna bring up some. That we also did. So when we looked at the Rondina plans, there was seventeen thousand square feet of structures, so there were multiple garages. There was a house, there was a pool house, um, there were outbuildings as well. Um, so we're proposing a a footprint of fifty-two hundred and eighty-seven square feet. So we're at thirty-one percent of what the Rondina approval plan had. From a bedroom count perspective, they had eleven bedrooms and a pool house, we're at eight bedrooms. From a limit of disturbance, uh, total proposed limit of disturbance perspective, that's on the top of that chart right there. Um, their plans had seven and a half acres of disturbance, we're down to three point nine six acres now because we tightened up our grading. So we're at fifty-two percent of what their proposed limit of disturbance was. I then looked at the limit of disturbance within two hundred feet. Of the wetlands, um, they had three point four or five acres and we have two point four six acres, so we're we're well within. We're we're under, there were seventy percent of what they were. I then looked at total impervious, which includes the impervious both within the upland review area and outside of it. Uh, they had an impervious area of about ninety-three thousand square feet and we're at about thirty-three thousand, so we're at about thirty-five percent. Of what was previously approved. Then I looked at it a little bit more closely, I said, what's the total impervious surface within two hundred feet? Of the wetlands, and as you can see, uh, we've we've reduced it. Uh, their prior approval had twenty-eight thousand square feet of impervious surface within two hundred feet of the wetlands. And we're proposing twenty-three thousand uh square feet. Um, so as I had said, we have no activities within a hundred feet of the Chappagh River. And this plan here uh is an overlay, so the. I just wanna make sure that shows up okay on your screen. So I'm gonna zoom in in a minute. So the solid orange represents the approved, previously approved plan. And the area in green shows our proposed activities, um, so some things of note. I'll work my way around, hold on one second. Um, so just looking at the area. Uh, along the brook. The septic system uh that bisects the Roxbury area that we discussed previously. The septic system for the Rondina approval uh was significantly closer. To the brook than our septic, uh, which which we have uh with it, basically within. The meadow area that currently exists, we have a real minor area. In the woods, uh, but it's it's of a minor nature. As part of the Rondina approval, this entire wooded area, which was. Which was existing woodland back then and now uh was proposed to be removed. As we look to the uh east or the top of the map. Uh, the Rondina application had uh disturbance right up to the edge of a. A little wetlands pocket that we had flagged, which discharges into the pond that's on the property. And then they had some of their stormwater management. Associated with it uh within fifty feet of that well and so what we've done is we pulled all of our activities in that area. So we're a hundred feet away from that well and area. And when you look uh down. At the lake itself. Uh, we've been able to get much closer to mimicking uh the Rondina application. So we have a a small increase in. Uh, activity over a hundred feet away from the Chappagh River for the drainage, but we were able to decrease our our limit of disturbance. Uh, directly adjacent to it to offset. And then in this area, the Rondina disturbance was a little bit closer to the lake and in this area over here. We're just a a small area uh closer to the lake than Rondina. But as you can see, the overall scope of our project, which is the green hatch line with the solid green line. Uh, is significantly lesser uh than the prior application, so.
Hey, Paul? So, sorry, um, that red line there, is that the footprint for the previous application for the house?
Uh, and the house in the pool area.
Yeah, okay.
But they're grading, so but then when you look, the dark uh blue bold lines here. This represents their drainage system associated with it, so that's why we tried to mimic our drainage at the same location. As theirs, so we're able to take our our house drainage and and deal with it at a similar location to where they dealt with theirs.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, we still have our ecologist.
One question.
Yeah, go ahead, Russ.
Do we have to notify Bridgewater?
Uh, there's no activity within five hundred feet, so I don't think we do, but maybe I'm.
I think they go by parcel, you know, not by where the development is, if your parcel is within five hundred feet.
Oh, well, they have seven properties here. So, so this property is not in Bridgewater, they have a.
Okay, I I heard a certain part of it's in Bridgewater, okay.
Uh, part of their overall property, yeah.
Alright, but this parcel is not.
Correct, this parcel is.
All in Roxbury.
Yeah, but I'll check the regs just to make sure and if we do, I'll I'll make notice over to Meg.
Yeah, it's no big deal, but it's the town that has to notify the other town.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize it was you guys as opposed to me, okay.
Right, that's why I ask, because if we need to do that, then we need to do that, but I could look into it. But if the whole parcel's in Roxbury. And it's five hundred feet from Bridgewater, which it is.
Yeah.
I mean, if Bridgewater's up the hill, um, we we should be good.
Yeah. Yeah, no problem, um, so we've also been working with our ecologist, um, which we mentioned a couple of months ago. Um, so a lot of the revisions that you see to the plan. Were based on your, you know, the direct input that you had provided to us as well as the input. Um, that he had provided, um, because he saw opportunities just like you guys did at the last meeting for us to move. Uh, items further, further from the river uh than we previously did, and when we looked at the topography more closely. We were able to make those adjustments and and mimic. You know, the areas of drainage where the Rondina plan previously was. And you know, I I admit firsthand, our 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 house itself is is no doubt closer to the river, as you can see. But when you look at the overall limit of disturbance, it's significantly less. Our our clients have owned the property for several years now. Um, and Merrill, who's one of the wives, it's owned by two families. And Merrill, who's uh two brothers and their families own it together. And Merrill's worked very close on on the location of the house and she's basically told us, you know, from a. If it if it costs more money to do additional drainage, so that's why we doubled the size of the drainage from what we would typically do. She said, do it. She said, it's important to me that I have the location of the house, but anything that we can do. From an environmental perspective to ensure that the runoff from the driveways, the roof. All things of those nature are are taken care of above and beyond what would be required anywhere else. And she said, just go ahead and do it, I I have no concerns. She said, do you need anything additional from a septic perspective? If we need physical barriers like a wall, go ahead and incorporate it, because I explained, I said, you know, in other applications. Where we're much closer to the wetlands, I said, you know, commissions have a concern that over time there may be creep. Down gradient towards the resource. And she said, well, in this case, how how can we prevent that? And I said, well, we could. We could have a deck with railings that that definitely prevents creep because it's elevated above the ground. And then off of the deck, we now have that retaining wall. Which represents basically our limit of disturbance, um, so it's about three feet in height. And it doesn't afford anyone the ability to to go beyond it, so it allows that. Hundred foot area between the Chappagh and and the wall, greater than a hundred feet actually. Uh, to be maintained in in perpetuity and and remain untouched. Um, so I'm here tonight, um, just looking for feedback, knowing it's an informal and preliminary discussion. Um, and uh, I thank you for your time and I have a lot on the agenda.
Yeah, hey, hey, Paul, I have a question, um, that area, the deck air, the uh. Lakefront area for like the kayaks and everything. Is that that circle?
Yeah, I just wanted to show that because that got brought up at the last meeting of where it was and so.
So I, so I see the driveway that comes up. From the, is that, is that a garage right there? Um, that that, see the driveway that goes from the circle?
This right here, it's a walking path, right there, Rob, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a walking path. So, so the idea is that walking path would tie into the steps that come off the deck right here.
Okay.
So there's no abilities, the the closest travel way is this magenta line here. And then the topography drops down, so there's no way for vehicles to get down into that area. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Any questions? Definitely an improvement, Paul.
Thank you very much, Russ. We've been working very hard and, you know, we took your your, all of your comments very seriously.
I guess I just have a a general comment and thank you so much, Paul, this is informative and helpful and detailed and such. I guess I just in general wanna make a comment that. You know, the comparison point to something that occurred in two thousand and six is 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 dated. I mean, I wanna think that in eighteen years, we've. Improved, become more thoughtful about our approach, so I guess. To me, a comparison point is just impact overall to the river as opposed to what was approved eighteen years ago.
So, I mean, yeah, we're cognizant of that, Kathy, and I respect that comment, um, that's why I'm here. Um, and that's why, you know, when we look at, you know, what drainage was proposed and, you know. You guys have a lot on the agenda tonight, so I'm not gonna bore you with minutia, but I'm gonna put it together for you so that outside of the meeting, you can look at it. Um, when we look at the amount of drainage that was proposed for that level of impervious surface previously. Um, we're we're proposing uh basically. Almost an equivalent amount of drainage, we're we're in the ballpark for one-third of the impervious surface. So we're totally cognizant of how drainage design has changed since the, you know, back then it was the two thousand horse form water quality manual. And, you know, I respect that comment and and am happy to fully address that comment.
Okay, again, thanks, Paul.
You're welcome.
Got it?
It's all I got.
Well, we'll look forward to a formal application.
Thanks very much, guys, I greatly appreciate.
Decisions on whether consultants are needed or not and we we could make all those decisions later on.
Yeah, I greatly appreciate everyone's time this evening. I know you got a lot of stuff, so enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Take care.
Who's up next?
Julie, you're muted.
Sorry, we're going to Pickett Road, let me get to the page we need to be on. And it's for construction of a single-family dwelling, pool, barn and shed, and I believe Heather Johnson is here. For the application, yeah.
Correct, I'm Heather Johnson from Complete Excavation, I'm talking behalf of Jim Casali. For Pickett District Road.
Hi, Heather.
Hi, how are you?
Welcome to Roxbury.
Thank you. Um, Jim is proposing a single-family home, pool, shed and it says garage, it should be a barn. Um, that's something that will be revised on the next meeting.
What's this address?
Uh, it's it's a zero zero Pickett District Road, double zero. Technically doesn't have an address yet.
Pickett District Road.
Or Pickett Road, sorry, I'm thinking of New Millford, Pickett Road, sorry.
You're at the wrong meeting.
I'm in the wrong meeting.
Okay, and this is for a new house and everything that goes with it?
Correct.
Where's Pickett Road?
Yeah, I know.
Uh, it is, I.
Uh, Russ, if you take Davenport to the very end, it's diagonal straight across at the stop sign.
Yes.
And if you zoom out, you'll probably see the Davenport on the on the map.
Oh, oh, it goes to the school.
Yes.
I go there every day.
It's right near the power lines, it borders the power lines over.
Right.
Yep.
You have the lower soccer field right there.
Yes.
Heather, are there any wetlands or water courses?
There is a wetland, it is flagged in the backside of the property, um, you can see. Um, it's eight point three acres. So, I mean, what we're looking to have constructed is only on one point four four acres, so the rest of the acreage would be left. Untouched. Um, I know like the pool, the um. The house and everything are within that one hundred feet of wetlands, so that's why we're before you, of course, because we're in within that one hundred feet.
Okay.
So. I know it's something that you guys uh. Probably have to take a look at, because since I just applied last week for this.
Sierra, you wanna go look at this?
What was that?
Well, on the way to school.
Yeah, sure.
It is extremely overgrown, I'm gonna pre-warn you, um, they haven't, we haven't, they haven't started any kind of construction, of course, because we have no permits. So I don't know how much you're gonna be able to really see in there, um.
Um, then we, we're gonna need it cleared, I mean, not the whole lot, but a pathway to where the house is gonna be. Where the wetlands is, we need to be able to inspect it.
Okay. Um, I could.
Before the next meeting? If if they can't get to it before the next meeting, they can hold off. Um.
We'll definitely figure that out.
Station and and submit it when things are. Uh, so we can inspect it.
Okay. So, just a path and and then so you guys can take a walk.
So we could walk in without getting barbed and caught and beat up.
Okay.
Just where the house is, where the garage, you know, stakeout.
Okay.
Where. You only need four stakes, we don't need it overly, but we're just trying to get a sense of where things are gonna be. And since they are uh proposing to go into the buffer zone, we wanna be able to see the wetland, see. How the lay of the land is and all that stuff.
Okay, so um, I can't, I can contact Julie, wanna have that all set to let you guys know. Um, so you guys can take your walk without going out there for no reason.
Right, just let Julie know, she'll let us know and then we'll we'll go out.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
Obviously, we don't need to contact anybody because there's nobody there, so.
Exactly.
Right.
Do you have any questions, any concerns at so far at this plan, um, that I can take care of?
Um, where's the drainage for the roof going?
Uh, that is something that on there, I mean, at this point, it's just proposal, there's nothing there, it only has a septic. I can definitely find that out with Ralph Gallagher, who's the engineer, and see what, you know, what he's proposing for that runoff. Um.
Tell him. He knows, but tell him the roof drainage has to go to the ground and infiltrators is what we require.
Okay.
Um, and that the driveway for the next meeting has to have a drainage plan. Uh, we can't just approve a driveway because.
Yep.
The first selectman will tell you, we've had so many problems with drainage off of driveways that we need to make sure.
Understood.
Okay, so that's it, he needs to put drainage into this, into these plans.
Okay.
Russ, not not just let, not like the so-called infiltrator system, but it could be basins also.
Yes.
Yes.
Something like that, it can't just go off onto the ground.
Yep.
Used to allow, unless there's no gutters, if there's not gonna be gutters, then you don't need drainage.
Understood, okay, all depend. Yep, alright, that'll have a discussion with them.
Alright.
Alright, any other questions?
See you in June.
Okay, see you in June, thank you so much, have a good night.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, next.
Next is Patrick Roy with a proposal from the Board of Selectmen. Um, for a Conservation Commission merger.
Good evening, everyone, um, so this had come up with the Conservation Commission. Um, because of the way our Conservation Commission has can uh somewhat been functioning. Uh, the idea is to turn it into more of a sustainable committee. Um, that would deal with, you know, recycling, it would work with towns' boards and commissions. Um, and really kind of try to strengthen the health uh and sustainability of our community. Uh, that being said, what according to Connecticut General Statute seven one thirty-one A. Um, the Conservation Commission, if established, um, should be looking on the utilization of uh land areas. And coordinate uh uh and basically. Look at land that should be conserved. Which they don't kind of do, so in doing so, we started to look at. You know, what it would mean if we did away with a Conservation Commission. Um, what we discovered is. You know, we would lose a a little bit of the visibility on dealing with conservation issues, much like you do. Uh, but you are regulated by your own statutes, so we would basically. Have inland wetlands and conservation together, where you could act as the same commission in both functions. So I believe you uh were sent uh in the packet, uh, the general statute as it reads. You know, we may have a commission, um, you can do research and and. You know, we may have a commission. Um, you can do research and 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 uh. Utilize, you know, possible utilization of land areas and have that purview from a conservation aspect. And you can function in both capacities. The current Conservation Commission would deal with uh more of the sustainability issues. Uh, there's a lot of other towns that have done such. Um, you know, Litchfield, Washington, uh, we looked at other towns in this. Um, but we also, we, you know, had some controversial issues in front of the Wetlands Board before. Uh, and I would like to have you have more oversight. In the decisions that you make. So this was proposed uh by the Conservation Commission, brought to the Board of Selectmen, and and now I bring it to you so you understand the responsibilities. Uh, of what this means.
Sounds like more responsibility on us, right, Patrick?
It is.
More work.
More work.
And I I I will brag about.
You can't have the meeting the same. Has to be a separate meeting. Um. Personally, I think the Land Trust and the Wetland Commission. Does the job of making sure things are con- conserved. I I feel we don't really need a Conservation Commission in Roxbury. If the one that we have doesn't want to do the job. Then why not just? The state law doesn't require a Conservation Commission. Um, so we could just do away with it, but if the commission feels that you don't mind taking on. The task and you got to read that uh thing that was sent out. There there's a lot there, you know, take an inventory of uh. Protected land, inventory of land that might need to be protected in the future. It's too bad we didn't have a couple people in town who really wanted to take that on. Uh, they could be on the commission. But work. As a subcommittee of the commission, right?
Yeah, for for many, for many years, the Conservation Commission did act i- in this sense. Um. As of late, the last few years, uh, it hasn't. I know uh six or seven years ago, they did put together. Uh, somewhat of a research project and they di- identified these areas. Uh, but. The inland wetlands commission can only, you are state regulated as the decisions that you make. Um, it was a suggestion of our town attorney that we still give you the ability to look at things and we don't, as a town. Lose that ability if we'd like it. And this may be a development issue like for um. Uh, I'll say the woods uh or something similar where we have a development project that you're looking at.
Okay, other people, how do you feel? I mean, I'll support whatever.
Would the Conservation Commission be joining our, like, if it was, if we merged, would the Conservation Commission be joining?
What's going to happen is the con- the Conservation Commission would be renamed and repurposed.
Right.
As Sustainable Roxbury Committee. So they're still going to be able to do the can and bottle drive and um their lectures on the environment and things. Um, and that's going to be more their redirected focus. What?
Okay, so they wouldn't be dissolving, like all the members are not leaving?
No, we're just re- we're literally re- redefining it. Um, because right now they're they're not doing the roles as it's described by state statute. And you're right, Russ. There hasn't been anyone to step up to the plate to do that research.
Right. I I mean, to me, this, you know, I I guess I want to think about this some more, but it almost seems like there could be a potential conflict of interest here. When we're making. Wetlands decisions based on state regulations, which. You know, yeah, they're conservation, but may not have the same. Um. Definition or uh. Um. You know, scope that that a town conservation commission would have.
Well, the plenty of towns have the inland wetlands and Conservation Commission. A lot of towns have that. They don't have two separate commissions. Like a lot of towns have planning and zoning. It's one commission. We talked about merging planning and zoning years ago and people were opposed to, so we kept them separate. Um, this is the same case. It would it would be one commission, but. You would have to have separate meetings to dis- discuss the conservation stuff. And it would require somebody on the commission, and it can't be me because I got enough to do. But somebody on the commission would have to take the charge of uh doing what Conservation Commissions are supposed to do. And if we're not going to have somebody take that, there's no sense in doing this.
That seems like.
I would think that would be someone who's currently on the Conservation Commission, right? They would take that, the lead on that end.
No, it'd be one of us.
No, it would be, it would be one of you. So you would be able to act in you as the same board. Um, you would be be by ordinance, because this would require an ordinance change um to look at it from both sides. You don't have to do any of the reporting unless you'd like to. You don't have to distribute or or put together publications on the land con- conservation unless you choose to. Um, we want gone through, and that's why I included the this the uh uh the statute with this because it goes. And you got to go through each shall and may and 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 we literally did that with the town attorney. Um, would it help if I also sent you um the outline for the uh new. Purpose and mission statement for the Roxbury Sustainable Committee? So then you could see how they work as well. And yeah, so this is truly an effort.
Doing that, and they don't want to do the conservation anymore is the way I I see it. And the town is just reaching out to the Wetland Commission to say, look. I guess the town wants to keep a Conservation Commission. The only way to do it is if we did it.
Could I ask, um, oh, could I ask uh Ross or Patrick? Um, one of the neighboring towns that perhaps have have i- it has experience in this. They they've they've done this for for years. It's been incorporated and perhaps they could. Come speak to us or send us a um, you know, model that works well. How are they doing it? What have they made?
They're doing it because they have certain people who take it on.
Well, I'd just like to hear from them. I think that that might, you know, understanding an effective way of doing it may be helpful for us in 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 forming our decision.
I could arrange that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, you know. I- is there anyone on this commission that would want to take on that task?
Good question. Because we're wasting our time if there's nobody on the commission.
It it wouldn't really require any additional work. We would, you would just have to do a separate agenda. So. Maybe a good comparison is what we've just done with the Historic District Commission and the delay ordinance. Uh, the Historic District Commission only has uh authority in the historic district, so we, in order to do the delay ordinance to all the historic structures in town. We actually have to set up them to act as a separate committee to which they're going to have to do are their own agenda. Because in that role, they are acting in a different capacity. So much like. In the wetlands would be, you would have an agenda to work in this uh for a different capacity.
Yeah.
Now, you don't have to have a meeting, but. Um, you know, you could if you wanted to. It would give you the.
Done right. If it's not going to be done right, I don't want to take it on. I don't want to just take it on and then do nothing and keep doing what we're doing. Like I said, if I'm going to chair the commission and we take it on, then it needs to be done and done right. It it's. It's not taken on and then do nothing. So if nobody on this commission is willing to take that on uh as their own uh thing to like. Thing to do a- and and also, and it probably would be better to be an alternate that did it because. The regular members have to, you know, they're they're voting and all that. I I guess it doesn't matter.
But but are are we talking? Are we talking about researching land that and targeting areas that would be good for conservation? Okay, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, doing brochures that educate people on conservation.
That sounds like a full-time job to me.
Yeah, proposing greenways where we may need greenways, but we don't need greenways in Roxbury. We already have a million thirty-two miles of greenways, by the way. And twenty-three miles of dirt roads that people like to walk on. Um.
I I would struggle to say we don't need greenways, but a- anyway, I I don't want to argue the point. I think it would be helpful, though, to have um. How someone, you know, explain what it entails so that the whole, everyone on the committee could have a sense for whether or not. He or she could manage it. I I think it's hard to say yes or no without really understanding.
Well, then then somebody has to research that. Somebody has to find out what town has it, what town's willing to talk to us. I'm I'm sure you're not going to get much cooperation because everybody in the land use business is very busy right now and.
I mean, I could see if I can get somebody for the next meeting that has a combined to see if I can, I'll just reach out to some area town. I'd be glad to do that for you.
That's what.
Understand, you know.
Yeah, and Patrick, maybe in advance of the of the meeting, I'm happy to talk to them to help sort of form the discussion so that.
Okay.
We address these questions that were kind of raising on this call.
Got it.
I mean, some some of the things we're talking about are in the uh. I guess it was an earlier version of the Plan of Conservation Development that as far as uh desirable areas in Roxbury. Um. You know, I I can offer thoughts from the Land Trust, obviously, and there's also the Husatonic Valley Association. That uh has um put together a map that that shows uh wildlife link linkages, which I think would be important as a conservation. Uh, subject here, too. So there are things available out there, but uh, yeah, I would like.
I don't think we need it. I really don't, but if you people want to research it and figure it out, that please, by all means. I'll gladly chair the commission, but I don't have time to um to take on another task.
I only, I I think the one thing that would have to be clarified a little bit more for me is just understanding. Like John said, I was thinking is the is potential conflict of interest and that. Is where I'm, tonight would be having a hard time wrapping my head around where that would go with pro- a project.
That's why you have to have a separate meeting. And remember, it's a commission that doesn't vote, has no power. You can't force anything. It's kind of like the Historic Commission. Um, well, they have some power. Um, but tha- that's what it is. It it's just, it's not, it's really doesn't, and that's why a lot of towns, not all of them, but a lot of them. Just combine the commissions just to make it easy. But to me, if you're not going to do the work, then why have it? You're just wasting time.
Well, maybe we can all review it and come back to it next meeting.
Sure.
Really, just absorb what Patrick said and then just read what we haven't read. Yeah, and um, it's been a busy month, so. Maybe we can come back to it and everyone can, I don't know, have a better idea for themselves.
Like I said, I'll reach out to the other ti- uh to another town. I'll I'll have a representative for your next meeting. Uh, I'll also bring in uh Gail. Uh, just so you can understand from a legal issue, because you know, maybe she could. Yeah.
That's going to be a long meeting.
Uh, please, I'll be sick that meeting.
Welcome to my world, that's all I have to say.
No, I I, you know, we could go, if the commission's interested in listening to Gail, I I have no problem with, but it should be after the meeting. You know.
Understood. I it just, I think the 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 only reason I even brought that up is because um I'm sure she can give you real world examples. Um, that could articulate better uh what responsibility or I I guess what. We'd be missing out by not having a Conservation Commission.
Okay, that then that's.
You know, I I I think we should see the value in what we're giving up if we say no.
Right, absolutely.
You know?
We'll have it, set it up before the meeting, so it doesn't interfere, because we have long agendas the next few.
I absolutely agree.
And and anybody who wants to attend to learn about it could could do that.
Okay, um, if I could arrange it and we did like a Zoom special meeting?
Yeah.
If that'd be easier, and then anyone wants to attend, we could have it as an informal and like a uh information session.
Doesn't need to be even be a wetlands meeting, it's right? It's not wetlands.
If I get you all together. It is talking well.
Yeah, yeah, okay, lawyers.
And.
No, but if it was on Zoom on a specific night, I'll throw out uh some feelers of some possible dates and. I'll uh I'll coordinate for that hopefully before the next meeting.
Okay, tha- thanks, Patrick, and if you could just, a heads up that, um, you know, there was a concern about conflict of interest, right?
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Roy, and what's next on our agenda?
That's me.
Uh, yep, we are going to John.
Hi, everyone. John Cody, um, W E O. Uh, just go over our non-regulated permits that we did. They're they're there right there. Thank you, Julie. Uh, there's only eight that we had to do this month. It slowed down quite a bit. But that's actually good for right now because I'm sure all of you know that Karen resigned. She retired from here. So we're going through a little bit of a transition, so it's going to be a little like. Feeling things out for the next couple days, maybe a week or so, and it'll be. Smooth sailing hopefully going forward. So um again, if anyone has any questions, uh, please ask me.
Still selling a lot of generators, huh?
Oh, my God. Generators and pools. That's all we do.
Generators and what? Pools?
Pools, yeah.
Pools, yeah.
That sums it up.
I have no questions. Anybody have any questions for John? Okay, next, let's clean up some NOVs.
Okay, so now we are going to uh sixty Ruckam Road. So Doug.
Yeah, Doug.
Yep.
Why did we ask Doug to come back? Oh, did did you submit a after-the-fact application, Doug?
Yes, he did.
I did. Sorry, there's a helicopter flying overhead, so I just.
Okay, so. That wasn't on the agenda, though, right, Julie?
Um, actually. No, it's in a separate file. We do have a an after-the-fact application from him, and we also have a notice of violation to the contractor. Uh, Kurt Lenahan, and he is unable to be here this tonight.
Okay, would you send him a message that we need him at the next meeting, please?
Oh, okay, I will do that.
Okay, I think the commission wanted to talk about the after-the-fact. Uh, application, which is why Doug is here, because we have to get this permitted. I mean, it's done, it's over with, but it needs to have a permit on the file so we can lift the NOV. And I think some people had questions last month. And I can't answer them, so Doug is here to answer them if you have questions.
I I was just wa- wondering about the overall intent of this area that's been cleared. Is there going to be lawn? Is there going to be, you know, is there a landscaping plan for it?
No, it's just um, at this point, it's really just to keep it as kind of lawn meadow. Um, it was a stand of spruces that I think, without knowing for, you know, exactly. That it was a Christmas tree farm that kind of grew into big trees, and they were all dying, and so that's what the chips are for. But the idea is just to sort of keep it like the lower meadow. We have an upper place, which is lawn, and a lower place, which is the meadow, and then there's another third that goes to the creek. Which are those hardwoods that you see in that photo on the top. So there's no plant, there's no plans to like build anything. There's no plans to do anything.
No, I was just wondering, you know, like this whole wet area here, is that, are you planning on planting seed there and hoping it'll it'll dry out and expanding the lawn to there, or is it?
So so this is the lowest part of the property, so it's six and a half acres. So this goes into the hardwoods, so the trees were cut effectively south of this. Um, so if you look at the pile of chips that are there. The area that you're looking at here is just to the right of that photo below on the upper portion. And then the rest of it is where the spruces used to be. But it's more like they were all dead. They were dying like Jonathan Lord, our tree guys, they're either red or black. But they were all dying from the ground up um in terms of that and. Um, just decided to take them down, apologize again for not getting a permit to do it, but. But yeah, no plans to build a bigger house, no plans to build down there in any way, just to sort of get out the dead trees.
As I said, I'm not concerned about the construction. I'm I'm more concerned about lawns and fertilizers and pesticides. You know, right up against the wetlands.
Yeah, no, so we haven't, we haven't fertilized the lawn for about twenty-five years. And we have no plans to do it. It's not the prettiest of lawns, but it's a beautiful piece of property. I mean, it's a huge acreage.
Wouldn't need to be fertilized. It just wouldn't. It's just not that kind of lawn. It's not a lawn. It's a meadow.
Yeah.
Um, and it'd be silly to fertilize it. You'd kill all the plants in it if you put weed killer in it.
No, no, we're not like. No, no, we're not like, we don't need any more lawn to maintain.
Yeah. Does anybody else, else have questions? All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the after the fact application. Anybody?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, Doug, you're off the hook. We're gonna try to educate the contractor, so this doesn't happen again.
No, no, appreciate that and apologize again, but thanks for the, thanks for everything.
No problem, Doug. Thanks for cooperating.
No problem.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to Mine Hill Road, Victoria Frost Forester. Um. And she has also submitted an after the fact application.
And that's why Victoria is back, right?
Yes, that is why she's back. She did submit the application.
You were gonna go out and just make sure everything was buttoned up, right?
Uh, yes, Russ, I wa, I did go out there, um, I didn't notice that some drainage was finished up. After the initial stop work order. Yeah, everything's pretty cleaned up there right now.
Okay, good.
Was, was the contractor supposed to be here at the meeting?
Uh, I think the contractor's at the next NOV, not for this one.
Okay.
Can you say that again?
So tired of it.
Oops.
Okay.
Ca- I'm sorry, ca- can you, can you say that again, John? What, what, um? Wh- when is the cont, I, I, I thought I was.
Uh, well, just to clarify this, same contractor did the work at both houses, both NOVs that were issued. Um, I think he's available for the next one, but we're not there yet, so I don't know.
I think he's available for the next one. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to be sure.
Yeah, he's. For the next. There's two properties, the next item on the agenda, he's pod up, so I think he's, he's there.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Okay. Um, I'll look for a motion to approve this after the fact, um, application.
I'm moved.
Gotta be somebody besides John, somebody else gotta step up here.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Sierra, are you out there?
I'm here, why do I? I'm here.
I have a motion, will you second it?
Second, yeah, I heard, I was waiting for somebody else to do.
Cool. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Victoria, for cooperating, we appreciate it.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Yep. Okay, next.
Okay, now we're going to sixty-three Mine Hill Road.
What's with Mine Hill Road?
We got water. Lots of water.
And we have an after the fact application. And the owners are both here.
And what's this one about? Do I know about this, John? Are you, um?
Yeah, Russ, it's almost, this is almost identical to the other one, same contractor, same stream, same results.
Okay. This was issued last meeting, right?
Yeah, this was, uh, we didn't know this one was done because it's up the hill, it's out of sight. But, um, right after we did the first NOV, then we stumbled upon this one.
Is this a, uh, is it an intermittent stream right here or drainage ditch? What is this?
Um, well, Rob, actually with all the rain we've had, it's been running constantly, but it is. At a minimum, an inter- intermittent stream, I mean.
But it looks like a hand dug, or a machine dug trench to me.
It does look like that.
It is, it is now.
Uh, it was.
Right. So is this contractor here?
The contractor is here with me.
Hi. Um, you need to get permits. Before you do any excavating around wetlands or watercourses.
So you understand?
Yep.
You can, you can speak into this. He's asking if he's able to, um, speak.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, we're not the court, we're not, we're not the police, we're.
He was asking if he can speak to me in Spanish and I can translate.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay. Okay. He said that he's very sorry, that the, that he, that he's sorry he did not, um, um. Uh, seek a permit at this particular point, and he understands the rules, and next time he will, um, make sure, uh, to be in touch and follow the rules.
Well, that's great, because that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do.
Yep.
Just make them aware, so this doesn't happen again.
Yep.
And let them know that we're here to help. We're not here to deny or hurt people, that's not why we all volunteer to do this. We're here to make sure things are done right.
Okay.
So when people come in to meetings, we could discuss it. And make sure it's done in the best way environmentally that it could be done.
Okay. Okay.
All right. If he has questions, I have a Spanish speaking friend.
Oh.
Willing to, uh, when he, he could text me, and then I could get Lou on, and we could. Lou could interpret for us.
Okay. Okay. He said, thank you very much.
Okay, good. So Amy, on to you.
I'm just in the room next door, because we couldn't fit on one screen.
It's just weird with the Zoom screens.
Um, we, we need to come out and look at it. Well, thank you for submitting an application, and the process is. When you submit an application, then we come out and look at it. And then we come back and we vote on whether to approve the application or not. In these cases, it's hard to deny him because the work is done, uh, but we could force you to put it back, but. That doesn't sound like it'll make much sense, but that's why we need to go out there to take a look at it.
Okay, I think John, John has been out to look at it, and since he's been out, we stopped all work, so nothing's changed. But we do.
Are you done?
Well, we're done with the hole, but Doug Devesta, the civil, uh, our civil, said we should really put riprap in. To protect, uh, erosion, so that's the only part we have left to do is just to put the riprap in.
Okay. John, do you have a problem with them putting riprap in and ending this, or do you think the commission needs to see this?
Um, I would have no problem. I could call Doug tomorrow, see what he has, something fine, then it's done anyway. Riprap makes sense.
He just told me six to eight, you know, number six to eight riprap.
Yeah, something solid, sure.
Sounds like it's important to get that done now.
Yeah, I would, I would do what the rains we've been getting, certainly stabilize it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Amy, I'll be up Friday with my friend Kathy, and we'll take a look at this, and then we'll report back to John. And, and probably recommend that, yeah, it's, it's in the best interest to, at this point, to get, get the thing finished.
Okay, we won't, I won't, nobody will be here on Friday, but please feel free, it's pretty obvious, if you follow the. Of the culvert on the Bridgewater line, it, you can see it. This is basically, we're getting dumped by their culvert, and it was starting to flood our, um, septic field. It's just quite a distance away, but it, it, it definitely sheets right over, so.
Right, and there's nothing the town could do, because the culvert's been there since the road was built.
No, that one's fairly new. I was told, we only bought the house four years ago, but I was told it was put in slightly before that, and it does look kind of new.
Really?
Yeah.
Have you talked to the first selectman?
I have, I talked to, well, I talked to Patrick and Patrick, um, uh.
No, uh, Curtis, Curtis, Curtis Reed.
Uh, well, no, I didn't, because, because Patrick got kind of the coal, the, the Heisman. And said, this sounds like your problem. Huh, I didn't even bother, but I did hire the arborist, John Lord, to come in. Because what was happening is all the trees are falling, and they were falling and getting closer and closer to our house. So I had the arborist come in saying, yeah, these trees right here had lost almost eighteen inches of dirt on their crown. Um, so we had to take some of the one, the ones that fell, we had to take them down. There are still some laying there, and they'll stay there. Um, but we did have to take down one or two, actually, probably like four or five. Cause they were just basically just dropping.
Okay. All right, so we'll come out Friday and report back to John.
Okay.
And, uh, John has your info, so he could get back to you on what, on to move forward or not.
Just one question, Russ.
And then the next meeting, we would act on the application, and you don't necessarily have to be here if. If, if we get this resolved, but we, we still will act on the application, because we, we need the property to have a permit.
Mm-hmm, okay.
You know what I mean? Like, if you don't issue a permit, this is gonna stay a violation. By issuing a per, permit, the violation goes off the property record.
Okay, so you'd prefer us not to do any, no matter what John says, or gets in touch with me, no riprap until the next meeting?
No, no, John, John, we'll get in touch with John, and we'll tell you, go ahead, do the riprap. We're just gonna act on the application next month.
Okay.
All right, doesn't mean you can't, it's already done.
Yeah, no, one of us can sit in if you, if you need us to be there.
Okay. All right, Amy, thank you.
Could you tell me what the, um, could you tell me what the date is for that meeting, for the, for the June?
It's the fourth Tuesday of every month at seven o'clock.
I've got you.
Remember the fourth Tuesday is?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, what's next?
Okay, um, meeting will be June twenty-fifth. Um, next we have. Your chairman's report, followed by, um, the West Cog report.
Well, I, I have nothing to report, other than I need to write. A thing for Patrick to put in the town, uh, you know, the town emails sends out. To just tell people before you cut trees, you need a permit, you know, if you're gonna work in streams. There's been a lot of damage to streams in this town, and people are, are trying to fix them. But they're not getting permits, and that creates a problem all the way around, because a lot of them aren't fixing them right, and they're only gonna have another problem. So I will do that this month. But only if Patrick puts my dog's picture in with his dog, that's, that's the only thing I'm asking. So I will get that done. Um, what's next?
Um, next is, we still have items fifteen through eighteen to go over from the West Cog Wetlands Report. And there is also another, um. West Cog Report, um, regarding Wilton Inland Wetlands Watercourses Regulations that Kathy put together for everyone.
Yeah, I, I said that I would pull the minor, intermediate, and significant descriptors. Last time we were, we were going through the West Cog Recommendations, and it was referencing my, you know, whatever minor, intermediate, and significant are. So i- i- it's described in appendix one, it's from the Wilton, um, regulations, so, um. That, I, I really, it's just verbatim from the report, just so we have a reference for it, point.
Okay, well.
And Russ, sorry, I, I just had a, I don't know where the right point is, but we had talked about, um, reaching out to voices or something like that. Is that all set? Did you, are you all set on that one? I don't, I, I don't know if we.
About getting them to cover us?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we took care of that.
Okay, okay.
We had a very positive discussion.
Excellent, okay.
Part of the problem is our Zoom meetings weren't being posted. Um. Because we didn't know that, so that's how she got the information, because she can't come to every meeting. So she would watch the Zoom meetings, and then when they stopped being posted, she stopped reporting. And then requested us to send her the, the meeting, and then we found out you're supposed to post them anyway, so they're all posted now.
Okay, okay, excellent.
Julie?
Um, yes, anything strictly on Zoom is posted again, yes.
Right, and Sue talked to me about w- going back to live meetings. Is anybody on the commission into that?
I, I think it's a good idea, although I'll probably hate myself for that, but, uh.
I, I agree.
Who else?
I just kind of brought it forward, um, to Ross, just because when, at least speaking for myself, when we have. Uh, longer agendas or compi- complicated, um, um, proposals, um, in front of the commission. That I feel that it's a little easier in person, and I feel that. Maybe it's easier too for the commission members to, um, converse with the, each other.
Right. Um, Rob? I know, you look on your deck and.
No, I'll go whichever direction the commission wants to go.
Okay, John?
Ted said too, sorry, Russ, I had kind of said too, that, you know, winter tends to be, um, our agendas aren't that long. I don't know legality wise, like as long as it's posted ahead of time, can we, um, you know. Go back and forth, or is that?
Could we, could we do hybrid, Julie? So when we want to.
If, if you do hybrid, would like, say this, okay, so say winter, the meeting might be kind of short, and you guys decide you wanted to do it from home. And you call it a hybrid meeting, somebody still needs to be at the town hall to open up the door to welcome people in that may come out. So you need to announce it ahead of time. If I suggest that you either. Go strictly go Zoom, or if you're gonna cancel a meeting, and you cancel a meeting, um, you can't really go hybrid.
How would this work? We stick with the Zoom, but when we want, wanna have an in-person meeting, then we announce it, and we do in-person. Do we still have to do Zoom and make it a hybrid meeting?
You, you don't have to do Zoom, um, it does have to be recorded, because it is a land use meeting. And it would be recorded even as an in-person meeting.
Right, okay. So gang, what we'll do is when we see a lot of, on, stuff on the agenda, or we know that a complicated. Applications coming in, we'll call a, uh, in-person meeting weeks before the meeting itself. How's that sound?
It sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
We'll try this out and work, work through it.
Hey, yeah, it sounds good to me.
Okay. On your, on your thing here, even though all this is in our regulations, not, it's not put in this, exactly this format. Um, and we don't have minor regulated activity discussed, but that's a disgust in the. Wetland Enforcement Officer's duties, that they could approve minor regulated activities that are in a buffer zone. Um, they can't approve, they can't approve septics, because, uh, Health Department has to do that.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if it's, like, the first paragraph, what is a regulated activity? I think that that's almost verbatim. Wil- Wilton versus what's in our.
Yeah, that's from the state, the state has that.
Ours makes mention of something of our inventory or, or some things, but, but, but the minor, intermediate, significant, I'm not sure if we. Define them in our list of definitions. So.
I know significant activity is.
Okay, okay.
It has to be, because significant activity trips a public hearing, so it's, it is defined in our regs. I, I don't mind putting in the other two definitions, but that requires a public hearing and a whole lot of work.
You, you know, and if you look at it honestly, um, you know, so if not. If it's either significant or it's not signi- right, if ours defines significant, then everything else is not significant, right? So, is that enough?
Right, and, and we know the Wetland Enforcement Officer knows he could approve minor activities, and when he's not comfortable. And it could be intermediate, he sends it to the commission, that's his call.
Right.
Okay. What was on the, uh, West Cogs list tonight?
Um, West Cog list tonight is the very last, uh, fifteen through eighteen. Actually, I should say, unless you wanna do, uh, I have fifteen through eighteen on the agenda, unless you wanna do all of them. Go fifteen through twenty.
Could you bring that in more? I can't even see with my glasses on. It's a dual person, person, look at that. Divest of additional unfunded state mandates and workloads that diminish the effective management of wetland permits across. I agree with that. Um, so the first one is encourage municipal zoning commissions to adopt buildable squares or rectangular tool. As a means to minimize the future impacts. Uh, Kathy, you went to zoning with that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, did they respond?
Um, yes, they, I mean, I, I, it's not a concise response. It was, yes, this is really, really interesting and yes, this is. You know, ultimately, I guess, beneficial, but how to implement in the midst of. Uh, proper, you know, properties that have been purchased and not yet built upon, you know, how to implement it is a whole other piece of work and. They're in process of, of some other challenging things like rewriting their regs, so they're.
Yeah, they're not in a position right now to take on that, that's for sure.
I, I can speak to that.
And if they want to follow up on the future, that's their role and not ours, so.
I can speak to it if you like. I'm on that board.
Oh, that's right. Okay, thanks, girl.
Um, yeah, we're in the midst of a full review and reorganization of the regs. Um, but it. It got favorable um, feedback and I think it's something that we're gonna attack as soon as we get through this part.
Okay. All right, the next one expands state and municipal support for the role of enforcement officer to. Enable dramatic expansion of staff time devoted to pre-application review process, such as what we did tonight. Rather than just accepting applications. But the state has to do that and the state. Has to train inland wetland enforcement officers better than they're training them now, which is an eight-hour course that we all take. And I do agree with West Cogs, Southwest Cogs' recommendation that enforcement officers take the forty-hour Army Corps course. To become certified. And me being a wetland enforcement officer, I'm putting that on myself, but I'm gonna do it anyway because I think it's a good idea.
And Russ, I mean, on the municipal side, I, I just, I guess I would just say, one, thank you for um, sharing um. Information with the committee in total to keep us surprised of um, you know. Articles that are out there that could be helpful to all of us and other websites and such. And so just as a committee, if we come across something that we just. Um, continue to share it amongst us to keep us all, you know, smart across the board.
Yep. Establish wetland avoidance strategies as a fu- fundamental element, foundational element of the inland wetlands program. I think we do that. The courts don't help us though.
No.
But the buffer zone ruling is. It's disgusting. It's a disgusting ruling. It took away our power to keep buffers, buffers. Um, and those are buffer zones, as you know, are, are insurance. And to say that you have to have a direct impact to the wetland, otherwise the buffer zone could be developed. Put, puts all wetland commissions in a bad position. So I, I, that's the courts. Um. So what are you gonna do there? Uh, again, the, the number eighteen is really for the state to take on. Um. I, I've said it before, the state should be providing us with more support for enforcement. There's enforcement is broken in Connecticut. It has, well, you know, it goes to the court and here you are three years later, so. What kind of enforcement is that? So. All right, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
It just, just one thing, you know, when we talk about the Vermont approach, to, to, just so we're all clear, like I, I, you know. I, I think their approach certainly is a little bit different, but generally speaking, it just, you know, it's pretty black and white. Like you're not gonna be able to build inside the buffer, right? And that's to me the difference. Russ, would you, do you see it differently than that? I mean, it's just like black and white, you can't. Whereas here, it seems to always be a discussion point. Yes, there's a buffer, but.
Absolutely, Vermont has gotten it right. You gotta have a buffer zone. And, and just prevent any kind of development, other than recreational and things like that.
I think it should be case by case. I don't think it should be totally uh, uh, eliminated. But I don't think that, you know, I think it should be up to the commission. To decide at, on a case by case basis.
I agree, but it puts a lot of, a lot of heat on the commission.
And, and so, and so Rob, the, the factors, I mean, then, then it sort of brings in this buildable, buildable square concept. Uh, in my mind, right? Because not every um, you know, buffer is the same. In terms of the topography and the soil, you know, the soil itself, is that kind of where you're going or were you thinking?
I'm not, I'm not really sure about the buildable square either, because I've worked in towns that have it both ways. You know, and I think it just, I think it should always be a case by case um, decision.
All right. Look, it's time to go watch this, what's left of the sunset, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good, good meeting, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Night, all right.